Okay, I'll set.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, at 7:00 PM on March 11th, 2021, I'll call to order this meeting of the Town of Leadyear Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a remote meeting over Zoom. I'll go ahead and do the roll call and I'll ask commissioners to unmute themselves in order to acknowledge their presence and I'll ask all attendees to please mute your line when you're not speaking. Ms. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yeah.
Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Capone.
Here.
Chairman Woody is here as well and also present are the CEO Felice and the Town Planner Burdick. With all regular members here, I'll appoint no alternates tonight. With that, we'll move to citizens petitions. If anyone wishes to speak regarding items not on the agenda, I welcome you to do so now. If you're here to speak about any of the items on our agenda, we do have several public hearings. And so I'll ask that you hold your comments for those for that public hearing. With that, any other comments on non-agenda items? Last call. Okay, hearing no requests for comments. Move on. We have no changes to the agenda tonight. So we will move on to the public hearings. So at 7:02 PM, I will reopen the continued public hearing for application PG 20-06 SUP for 20 Lorenz Industrial Parkway, modification of a previously approved special permit number 4515 for a recycling facility. We have one new exhibit, which is a letter dated March 9th, 2021 to the Town of Leadyear. It states, "On behalf of the owners of the above referenced project, this firm is requesting a continuance of the public hearing to the April 8th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you have any questions, please not hesitate to contact me." That's from Ellen Bartlett, professional engineer. So we will obviously continue this till the April meeting. There's been a couple of difficulties that have held up this application. And so we expect to get finalized plans from the applicant in the next week or so, so that we will be able to move forward with that. As such, there's no presentation from the applicant tonight. However, if anyone, if any member of the public wishes to speak on this application, I welcome that public hearing or that public comment at this point. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. At 7:03 PM, I will continue this public hearing to April 11th at 7:00 PM. Next item on our agenda is decision and discussion of application PG 20-06. The public hearing still open. There's no action on this item. The next item is a public hearing again for application PG 21. So at 7:04 PM, I will open the public hearing for application PG number 21-01 SUP, 12 Sherwood Trace, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. Applicant owner is Charles Gallagher. This is a home husbandry permit for the keeping of goats. I will read the list of exhibits in and forgive me, this is a little slow doing this virtually. Exhibit one is the application itself, which was received on February 8th, 2021. Exhibit two is the GIS site plan. This is simply a print off of the applicant's parcel from the town's GIS site. Exhibit number three is a site plan. This is a one-page site plan showing the subdivision layout. Exhibit four. Exhibit four is a letter to the abutters. This is dated February 26th, 2021. States, "Dear Corin Tire, we are Charles and Colleen Gallagher. We live at 12 Sherwood Trace. We applied for a special use permit with this town of Leadyear because we would like to get two goats. We are required to notify you of this public hearing for this permit because you live within 100 feet of our property. The hearing will be had via Zoom meeting on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The access information will be provided on the town website. Please see the attached legal notice, which contains the same information. For your information, we are interested in getting two baby goats this spring. Not only do we hope they'll help clear some of our overgrown brush, we hope they'll be fun additions to our family. They will live in a 10 by 10 shed-like structure with a fenced-in enclosure entirely on our property, specifically in our backyard and in accordance with appropriate zoning laws. We'd be happy to talk to you if you have any questions or concerns." Exhibit number five is the legal notice. Per the current executive order, this was posted to the town website on February 25th, 2021. At 7:00 PM Thursday, March 11th, 2021, the Leadyear PCC will hold public hearings on the following applications, the pertinent applications, application PG 21-01 SUP, 12 Sherwood Trace, Gales Ferry, Connecticut, special use permit for home husbandry for the keeping of two goats. Exhibit number six is the public hearing notice to the applicant, dated February 24th, 2021. Dear Mr. Gallagher, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a remote public hearing for this application at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 via Zoom. Please be aware that you or your representative must be in attendance for this public hearing to answer any questions the commission may have. You will also receive a link in your email a few days before the hearing to access this meeting through Zoom directly from your device. Notification to the abutting property owners is required within 10 days of the public hearing, section seven, special permits, and information about certificates of mailing. Exhibit number seven is the site plan drawing. This is a sketched on set from the one-page map with the proposed structure drawn on it. Exhibit number eight is the CEO member memo. This is dated. Is not dated. Owner applicant requests approval of a home husbandry special permit in accordance with section 8.15 zoning regulations for two goats with a 10-foot by 10-foot shelter structure at their residential property. Staff comments. "The site is located on .92 acres, 40,000 square feet in the R40 district with approximately 180 feet of frontage on Sherwood Trace in Gales Ferry. The site is currently developed with an existing 3,167 square foot single-family home. The site is subject to two easements and one right-of-way as follows. SCWA waterline easement, Town of Leadyear drainage easement, and a CT Light and Power Company right-of-way. These easements and the right-of-way are shown on map number 2135 that is on file in the office of the town clerk and is attached to my report for reference. Applicant is not proposing to construct any structures within these areas. Section 8.15 Home Husbandry of the Zoning Regulation states, 'No person shall keep or maintain livestock and/or poultry in residential districts that are not farms without first obtaining a special permit from the commission after a public hearing.' Applicant has submitted a site plan using the as-built location survey for the home, which was on file in the zoning files in the land use department. Applicant has scaled the location of the proposed 10-foot by 10-foot shelter structure on a copy of the plan. Note, this plan does not show the Town of Leadyear drainage easement. However, it does show the SCWA waterline easement, which is closer to shelter than the drainage easement would be. Proposed shelter location appears to be in the rear yard of the property and complies with setback requirements in section 8.2 accessory structures and section 8.15 Home Husbandry of the Zoning Regulations. Additionally, on March 10/21, I conducted an inspection of the property. The proposed shelter area appeared to be well-drained and stable with vegetation. Application fee, please be advised that due to Governor Lamont's executive orders currently in effect, staff was able to post all legal notices for the public hearing on the town's website. And therefore, we did not have the costs typically associated with posting in the newspaper as required by the state statute. Subsequently, staff recommends that the commission allow staff to refund the special permit public hearing fee to the applicant minus any non-refundable state fees. Note, the applicants for the previous two special permit affirmations that were submitted to the commission were not charged this fee under the same situation. A proposed motion is also included in the CEO's memo." Exhibit number nine is an attachment to the memo, which shows the setbacks for both the yard and shelter, as well as the adjoining houses and road setback as specified by the zoning regulations. That is all of the exhibits I have. I did not see the certificates of mailing as an exhibit. Kyle, are those in there and I missed them?
I believe they were in there. I saw them in the paper file. Maybe Deb can just confirm quick.
I'm pretty sure they're attached.
I did find them. They are at the end of exhibit number four. Apologize, number four is a long exhibit that contains multiple letters as well as all of the attached certificates of mailing. So those are in exhibit four. Thank you. With that, that's all of the exhibits I've got. Mr. Gallagher, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing? Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing?
Just planning on, like you said, getting a couple baby goats. I got three kids, 12, 10, and eight, basically. You know, I grew up in a town in New Jersey with some neighbors that had goats and it was a good, you know, family experience for them. And so I would like to, you know, get a shelter, just get a couple goats for, you know, good experience for the kids.
Yep, fair enough. And so just a note, I think Mr. Felice did include this on one of his memos or one of his notes, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear is that both the applicants and abutting properties are not on a well. So they don't need to worry about the sanitary radius from a wellhead for the structure. So I had a couple of questions for you. So first of all, you own the house and property, correct?
Well, the bank owns it, I pay more.
Fair enough. I'll take that as a yes. The structure that you are planning on constructing, what are, what type of structure are you planning on constructing? This is a small shed with a door. This is lean-to, what are you planning on constructing?
Yes, sir. So it's a, it's a 10 by 10 shed that I found on Home Depot. You know, it's the kind of thing that you would, it's a wooden shed. It comes with a floor, although I probably wouldn't install a floor. I would just have a hay bed for soil purposes, but it's your standard. You know, if you went to the parking lot of a Home Depot and saw the types of wooden sheds they had there, it would be one of those. Again, in particular, it's 10 by 10, which I believe to be large enough for the, for the two goats that I would house there.
Yep. On none of the maps do I see the location of the yard area or how you're planning on containing the goats in the yard area. If you've had goats before, you know they can be clever.
Yes, sir. You know, in accordance with the ordinance, it didn't seem like it was required to have any particular setback distances for the yard. So I plan to have a 20 by 30 pen area, you know, obviously encompassed with the shelter, which again, in accordance with the ordinance, I believe is, you know, you need 250 square feet per animal. So my 20 by 30 area would be certainly large enough to, you know, be sufficient for the two goats. I do have a, you know, I've done some research. It's going to be metal posts with some, you know, specifically goat wire fencing that's going to contain them. And, you know, to your point about, about them being clever, you know, this will be a, a learning experience for me, right? I don't, I don't expect to have the perfect solution to begin with. I will evolve, you know, as they, as they evolve. So, but, you know, I have certainly, you know, they won't be running loose in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so there is a yard area setback on the property line specified in the regulation. It's relatively small, but there is, there is a setback restriction for that.
What section is that in?
That's in 815-2A. If you look at the last sentence, it says setback distances for yard area shall be a minimum of 20 feet from the property lines.
Okay, okay.
And what is the plan? Where is feed going to be located? Where is bedding waste going to go? How are you managing that?
So feed would be located in, essentially just the, you know, hay, right? There'll be a bin inside the contained area. And then as far as, what did you ask about?
Bedding waste, so.
Yeah, so I intend, I intend to compost most of that, probably in another area of my yard.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners before I open this up to the public?
Mike Cherry, I have one question.
Please.
What are the restrictions on your use of the CLMP or ever-source easement? Can you, are there anything written in your deed that precludes you from using that area as part of your pen?
Not that I was able to gather. I don't necessarily intend to use that area, but I don't know if I'm restricted from that area. It was not, you know, we pulled the easements from the town clerk's office and there were no conclusive words in the easements that prevented that.
I know in the past, they've had some concerns on permanent structures going into the easement, but this doesn't appear to be that, other than your shelter, which is currently drawn as outside both easements. Thank you.
Sir, that is absolutely how I read it also, that there will be no permanent structure that encroaches the easements.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
You're going to speak before?
Hello, am I here?
Yeah, I heard someone. Can you identify who you are, please?
This is Scott Williams, 10 Sherwood Trace, adjacent neighbor to the Gallagher residence.
Yep, please.
We are, we are for the goats. They're going to, they're great people and they're going to be great stewards to the goats and to the, they've been great stewards to the community. So 10 Sherwood Trace is a thumbs up for goats.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Okay, hearing none. So before we close the public hearing, so my, my only concerns are I'd like to get the yard area noted on the site plan. Because right now, we have no way of ensuring that the yard area that is required is being supported. I think that you can, you know, you can thread the needle of all of the various restrictions in order to get that needed area. So I think it's possible. And so I think that we probably can condition the approval on submission of something for that. But, but I do think that, you know, we need to get that locked down so that, you know, we can verify that that requirement is met. Any comments? Yep.
Excuse me, for the record, Liz Burdick, Town Planner. I'm hoping that Deb could perhaps share the last exhibit, which is a drawing. It's attachment A to CEO memo, so that everyone can see it. Kyle actually took the time to draw out that area with regards to setbacks. So I was hoping everyone could take a quick look at it. And Mr. Gallagher could take a look at it as well.
Yeah, and I think that that demonstrates that the setbacks can be met. It doesn't demonstrate where the yard area will be or the size of the yard area, which is my concern.
And sir, to be clear, the only requirement that needs to be met is that the setback distance for yard area shall be a minimum of 20 feet from property lines. Is that correct?
Yeah, so basically, if you look at the picture that we're looking at now, anything inside the essentially 500 square feet inside the blue hashed zone and presumably attached to the 10 by 10 structure meets the requirement. And so that's why I say I think you can meet the requirement, which is why I think we could probably condition the approval of presentation of a modified site plan that shows a minimum 500 square foot yard area inside those setback limits.
Yep, okay. So again, just to be clear, it's just the 20 feet from property line requirement.
And the minimum square footage, yes.
Yep, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, 200 square feet per animal. Yep, check.
Yep. And I would think that we also would want to make sure that that yard area is probably attached in some way to that shed.
Sure.
Yep. Kyle, any other comments? Last chance from the commission. Go for it, Kyle.
I'm sorry, I had bad connection tonight. I don't have anything in the comments. I just wanted to show the commission that the area that potentially the yard could go. So I would agree that I think it is doable, just a matter of showing it on the plan. And as you can see, I also sketched the other approximate setbacks from the houses. Clearly, there's plenty of room there, so that's all, yeah.
Yep, I appreciate that, Kyle. Before I saw this attachment, I was concerned about being able to approve this just because I wanted to, you know, there's an interlocking array of setbacks that we need to meet. And for me, this picture clarified, clarified that.
If I could, one other quick question.
Please.
Is the rock wall that's shown on this plan still there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, with that at 7:23, I will close the public hearing for application PG number 21-01 SUP, 12 Sherwood Trace, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. And I'll move on to the discussion and decision for 12 Sherwood Trace, Gales Ferry, Connecticut. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion that the commission approve application PG 21-01 SUP, 12 Sherwood Trace, applicant owner Charles Gallagher for home husbandry special permit for two goats and the construction of a 10 by 10 shelter. In doing so, the commission has considered the application, the site plan, the record documents and public hearing and finds the application meets all applicable sections of the Ledgerd zoning regulations, including the standards set forth in the home husbandry section 8.15. The following condition should apply, that the, it's the latest attachment, sorry, what number was that? Attachment A to the CEO memo be updated to include a yard area for goats to comply with minimum area for animals and in the yard setback.
Yeah, minimum size of 500 square feet.
Is that for, for both animals? Yeah.
Yeah.
Second, Mike Cherry.
Thank you. Discussion on the application. I think, you know, certainly the setback requirements are all met as specified in 8115. I think this being on public water enabled this to happen. And so it's a nice layout where there's kind of a section off to the side there where you can, you can thread the needle on all those setbacks. And so I think it meets the letter of that. We, the, you know, we haven't used this, I haven't ever used this regulation while I've been here. So it's interesting to see. I think it's a good use of this regulation to allow, you know, to relatively small livestock, you know, on a residential property is the point of the original regulation. And so this seems to meet the spirit of that as well. Any comments from commissioners here?
Mike Cherry, I'll agree with the chair. This is the first time in my regulation that we've issued a special permit for home husbandry. And I think it's interesting that part of the requirements for the socialization of the animals I read on Facebook. So it didn't come out of our regulations, but the Facebook community was nice enough to say, hey, you could need two goats instead of one. So well done to all concerned.
Other commissioners? Hearing no comments then. I will call the vote on the motion to approve PG-21-01 SUP. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Did we need a, sorry, a second motion to, there's something about an application fee?
We don't need a motion for that. That was just a notice that in accordance with the executive order, we are refunding the public hearing costs. So thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for coming out. Good night. We'll, we expect a status update on how the goats are doing sometime this year.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And, you know, very interestingly here that you guys have not had to deal with one of these before. So, you know, happy to be a part of it. And I will go see Kyle and update that, that yard area on the, on the map. So, and nothing further from me. Thanks.
Great, thanks. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before we move on, may I just note something regarding the first application?
Please.
I was looking at the exhibit that was noted requesting an extension of, I mean, a continuance of the public hearing to April 8th for 20 Lorenz. I noted that in the letter, it did not grant the commission an extension. However, I just reached out to the engineer Ellen Bartlett. And I have in my hand a revised letter stating, "In addition, the applicant is granting an extension of time for the closing of the public hearing until April 8th, 2021." I just wanted to make sure that gets put on the record. We can note it as an exhibit received this evening.
Thank you for that. Yeah, that will be exhibit number 21, will be a grant of extension dated March 11th, 2021. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, the next item is application number PG 21-02 RA, which is a zoning regulation text amendment. Applicant is the Leadyear Planning and Zoning Commission for proposed regulation amendments regarding temporary forms of outdoor entertainment to revise section 3.5 uses by district and add new section 8-27 supplemental regulations, temporary forms, excuse me, of outdoor entertainment. And I apologize, I forgot to note the time. So we will open the public hearing for application PG 21-02 at 7:29 PM. Let me shuffle tabs so that I can read in the exhibit list. Exhibit number one is the application packet for zoning text amendment received February 24th, 2021. Exhibit number two is the draft text. Exhibit number two is the draft text amendment submitted to the town clerk. This includes two changes to proposed text amendments. First is to revise section three point five to add to the schedule of permitted uses temporary forms of outdoor entertainment, which is allowed by site plan review in the Gales Ferry Design District. Second, it adds a section eight dot twenty-seven to the zoning regulation for temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. This regulation has two parts. I will read through this proposed change. A purpose to allow temporary forms of outdoor entertainment events in the Gales Ferry Design District Design District with an administrative site plan approval. Such activities permitted under this provision shall include fairs, bazaars, concert exhibitions, rodeos, circuses, carnivals, festivals, outdoor theater productions or other similar activity. An application for approval of such activity shall be submitted to the zoning official at least thirty days prior to the event and subject to the requirements in eight twenty-seven B. The zoning official may at his or her discretion refer said application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and approval. The application shall indicate the addresses of the event, the type of entertainment to be provided, and the period of time over which the event is to occur. Such application shall be accompanied by a sketch of the site indicating the location and method of sanitary facilities, onsite parking, traffic controls, provisions for fire safety, proposed seating arrangements, location of all temporary booths, canopies and or tents, and such other information as a zoning officer may require in order to assure that the public health, safety and welfare is addressed. Section B requirements. One, minimum lot area. There must be a minimum lot area of ten acres for a temporary event. Two, time period, no single event shall exceed a time period of seven consecutive calendar days. The total of all activities permitted under this section on a single property shall not exceed sixty days within a single year. Noise, the town may limit the hours of operation of a temporary use in the interest of minimizing and or eliminating noise. Four, lighting, outdoor lighting at the proposed event shall not spill over the site's property lines and should be the minimum intensity necessary to light the event area adequately and safely, including any parking lots and access drives. Five, sanitary facilities, the application will include a detailed description of the number and location of all sanitary facilities as approved by LLHD. Six, code compliance, prior to the start of the event, all required code compliance approvals shall be obtained, included but not limiting to the fire marshal, the building official and ledge light health district. Seven, parking, the application will include a detailed description of how parking for the expected number of guests will be accommodated on a site. Parking must not spill over into the surrounding neighborhood unless specific parking plan is approved by the town. Eight, buffering, a fifty-foot buffer shall be provided between the event and any residentially zoned properties. Nine, signage, event signage shall be installed in accordance with section nine but nine point three temporary signs of these zoning regulations. Application number four is sorry, application number three is the legal notice. This is posted on the town website to twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. Application number PZ twenty-one dash oh two RA zoning regulation text amendments applicant Ledyard Planning and Zoning Commission for proposed regulations of regulation amendments regarding temporary forms of outdoor entertainment revise section three dot five uses by district and add new section eight dot twenty-seven supplemental regulations temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. Exhibit number four is a submittal from Mr. Treister entitled Part One Analysis of Proposed Text Amendments for application number PZ twenty-one dash oh two RA temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. Mr. Treister made some modifications and resubmitted this as a separate exhibit, so I won't mention that further. Exhibit number five is a submittal five pages from Mr. Treister entitled Suggested Zoning Regulations for Temporary Outdoor Entertainment Events, which includes a complete regulation amendment proposal from Mr. Treister to allow temporary outdoor events. Exhibit number six is a modified version of exhibit number four corrected to identify changes in the proposed amendment. I won't read through that. Exhibit number seven is a second submittal from Mr. Treister, which is a whole zoning amendment entitled zoning regulations to allow very small, small, medium and large temporary outdoor events. This is the submittal that we received today, that a note was sent to the commission about to review prior to the meeting. That is all of the exhibits that I have. As a way of introduction, this follows on from a conversation that we had regarding the Ledyard Fair at our last meeting where we put together a proposed regulation amendment to allow temporary outdoor events, which would include the Ledyard Fair in the Gales Ferry Design District. The Gales Ferry Design District is a commercial district. That is the narrow strip commercial district that surrounds Route twelve, which is the highest traffic road in Ledyard. And so this is designed to allow a flexible array of outdoor events on large parcels in that district. I did speak to our attorney, Mr. Landelina, today regarding this application. And he did have a couple of comments that he has to share with the commission. And so I wrote those notes down and I'll share those those now. So first, he suggested that we include specific hours of operation instead of what was what's proposed in the draft. His comment was, this makes it pretty hard on the ZEO who's approving these to do this. And so he did suggest instead replacing those with specific hours of operation, you know, something like Friday and Saturday, nine to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM, but to make that explicit so the ZEO's only job is to verify that any proposed event meets those hours. He also suggested that we clarify in the regulation that this is intended for public events as opposed to private events. He said in reading it, it seemed clear that that was our intent, which it is, but we don't explicitly state that in the regulation. He also did comment that the lighting restriction would be difficult to enforce. And so we might want to consider how that's worded. The last comment he made was more general and essentially what he said, and he used as an analogy the the four-town fair in summers, which has had, you know, some issues. And so what he says is that, you know, the problems with this type of thing has arisen not generally from the owner of the property. So the problem in summers was was never the neighbors complaining about the four-town fair. It was when the property was rented out. And so that was when it was somewhat complicated. So he did suggest that, you know, we remember that this regulation as it's proposed, you know, is not specific to allowing the Ledyard Fair on a single property. It does allow a wide range of uses on these parcels. And so he suggested that we do keep that in mind as we consider this text amendment. Ms. Burdick, any further comments on that before we open it up?
Hang on, I'm unmuting. Yeah, no, I'm, no further comments at this time. I had the same, I had the same discussions with Attorney Landelina today. And I'm gonna also, as we speak, I'm trying to switch screens so I can check my notes that I made on my desktop. So I'm working on that now. So please feel free to go ahead with public comment.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll come back to you after public comment. And with that, I'll open this up to the public to for anyone who wishes to speak regarding this application.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
This is Eric Treister. I'd like to address the commission.
Please, Mr. Treister.
Thank you. As you know, I filled up the record with with my handiwork. I hope I did not overwhelm anyone. My name is Eric Treister. I live at Ten Huntington Way, and I'm representing only myself as a concerned citizen on this application. The the first legal notice for this hearing was dated February twenty-fifth. And I immediately requested and was provided a copy of the application, which was also dated February twenty-fifth. In my opinion, there were several deficiencies in the February February twenty-fifth version of the proposed regulations, which I documented and provided for the record. However, on March first, without my knowledge, the application was amended. Later, I discovered that the amended version was different from the original, and as a result, my initial analysis was no longer on point, and it should be deleted or ignored. I prepared a corrected analysis that I entered into the record on March eighth, and its name is Part One Corrected Analysis Based on Amended Application. And I'm hoping that everyone on the commission has read that. As you know, applications that require a public hearing are required to be posted in the clerk's office for a minimum of ten days excluding the end dates. My calculations show the amended application, which was dated March first, was posted for only nine days excluding one of the one of the end dates. As such, I urge this public hearing to be kept open so the proposed application and its amendments, if any, can be posted for the required period. My presentation this evening will focus on the sections of my analysis that document what I believe are the four most important deficiencies of the proposed regulations. The first concerns the information that must be included with the application. The proposed regulations require that the applicant shall provide, quote, "Such other information the zoning enforcement officer may require in order to assure that the public health, safety and welfare is addressed." The zoning enforcement officer and the Planning and Zoning Commission, in my opinion, do not have the authority to require information that is not specified in the regulations. The second deficiency is that the proposed regulations improperly allow town fairs, circuses and other large and potentially intrusive land uses by right. The proposed regulations allow the zoning officer, or if he chooses to not make the decision, the Planning and Zoning Commission to administratively approve a proposed circus or a carnival zoning permit following essentially the same procedures and the same amount of review effort as is required for the approval of an ordinary zoning permit for a house or a storage shed. This is wrong. Uses that are allowed by right can only have objective requirements, such as being over a minimum setback distance, under a maximum percentage of lot coverage and under a specific height limit and other objective criteria. These are often called the bulk requirements. Uses allowed by right must be approved if an application satisfies that criteria. For example, the proposed regulations, which allow fairs, bazaars, exhibitions, rodeos, circuses, carnivals, festivals and outdoor theater productions by right also allows something called other similar events by right. The phrase "other similar events" requires a subjective decision, and the ZEO and the Planning and Zoning Commission are not supposed to make subjective decisions for uses that are allowed by right. A decision if a proposed event is or is not similar to a to an event type that is listed in the regulations as being allowed is a subjective decision. The result is that if someone proposes a small outdoor temporary entertainment event, such as a two-week outdoor ice skating rink for use in January that will only have fifty attendees per day, neither the ZEO or the Planning and Zoning Commission are able to approve the application. However, if the proposed ice skating rink required a special exception permit, the Planning and Zoning Commission, after a public hearing, can make the can make the subjective decision that the proposed small temporary outdoor ice skating rink is similar to a small festival and and afterwards properly grant the permit. Another example is that the proposed regulations provide that, quote, "The town may limit the hours of operation of a temporary use in the interest of minimizing and or eliminating noise," unquote. Although zoning regulations can impose hours of operation and maximum noise levels, the zoning official and the Planning and Zoning Commission do not have the authority to impose their preferred hours of operation or their or their preferred noise levels on uses that are allowed by right. However, it would be proper, after a public hearing, for the Planning and Zoning Commission to impose its preferred hours of operation and noise levels as a condition of approval for a special exception permit. Another example would be that the regulations require that outdoor lighting at the proposed event shall not spill over the site's property lines. This is an objective requirement that, if there is spill over, can only be enforced with a cease and desist order. However, prior to the event, the decision of whether or not the proposed lighting will spill over the site's property lines would be a subjective decision. And subjective decisions are not allowed for uses that are allowed by right. A special exception permit is required for the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine after a public hearing if the proposed lighting is likely to spill over the property lines and if there is a need to impose an alternative lighting design as a condition of approval. The proposed regulations also require that the proposed lighting should be the minimum intensity necessary to, quote, "light the event area adequately and safely." The words adequately and safely require one or more subjective decisions. The ZEO does not have the authority to determine if the proposed amount of lighting is the minimum necessary for the event. However, if a special exception permit is required, the requirement would become a standard for the special permit, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the authority to determine if the proposed lighting intensity is the minimum amount necessary. The commission would also have the authority to reduce or increase the intensity as a condition of approval of the special exception permit. The proposed regulations also require that a detailed description of how parking for the expected number of guests will be accommodated on site. It is true that this is an objective requirement. The problem is one of reasonableness. If the applicant simply provides a detailed description that states that a proposed town fair event will have tick ten parking spaces and the expected number of attendees is ten, the ZEO or the Planning and Zoning Commission would be required to approve the application because the application did indeed include a description of how parking will be will be provided and the expected number of guests exactly as specified in the regulations. However, the ZEO would have no authority to deny the application, even though the proposed parking and expected number of guests are unreasonable for a town fair event. If a special exception permit were required, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the authority to impose, after a public hearing and as a condition of approval, additional parking and an increase in the expected number of attendees. I strongly urge, strongly, strongly urge that all temporary outdoor entertainment events, which will be complex land issues, require a special exception permit. The third deficiency has to do with spot zoning, which, as you know, is illegal. The classic definition of spot zoning is, quote, "The process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners." Another common definition is "Spot zoning is a provision in a general zoning plan which benefits a single parcel of land by creating an allowed use for that parcel that is not allowed for the surrounding property, surrounding properties in the area." The proposed regulations allow temporary outdoor entertainment events only in the Gales Ferry Design District and only on ten or more acres. The only parcel of land in the Gales Ferry Design District that is larger than ten acres, I believe, is the seventeen point nine acre Sweet Hill Farm at thirty-nine Military Highway, which is owned by a limited liability company that is, in essence, owned by the mayor. I urge that a land use attorney be consulted to determine if this fact that the property that the that with that the property at thirty-nine Military Highway is the only property in Ledger that is allowed to have temporary outdoor entertainment events constitutes spot zoning. The fourth important deficiency is, as proposed, the ordinance requires too much land for very small and very for very small and small temporary outdoor entertainment events. For example, while it may be appropriate to require ten acres for a circus, rodeo or a town fair, the ten acre requirement is excessive and makes no sense for the hosting of a summer series of temporary outdoor chess tournaments or a small ice skating rink or as a home base for annual regattas. The regulations also do not small flower art, small flower shows, art shows or small concerts in other locations, which is unreasonable. I submitted as a separate entry into the record a suggested alternative set of regulations that address all of the deficiencies in the proposed regulations. It is titled Suggested Zoning Regulations for Temporary Very Small, Small, Medium and Large Outdoor Entertainment Events. It is, and it is an alternative approach that with a special, that together with a special exception permit allows for what I call very small temporary outdoor events if on three allows for what I call very small temporary outdoor events if on three acres or larger, three acre or larger parcels for up to one hundred days per year, if fewer than one hundred attendees are expected. The suggested, suggested regulations allow slightly larger events by a special exception permit that I call small temporary outdoor entertainment events if on five acre or larger parcels for up to sixty days per year, if fewer than five hundred attendees are expected. My proposed regulations allow what I call medium temporary outdoor entertainment events if on ten acre or larger parcels for up to thirty days per year, if fewer than one thousand attendees are expected. And finally, my suggested regulations allow for what I call large temporary outdoor entertainment events if on fifteen acre or larger parcels for up to fifteen days per year, if fewer than three thousand attendees are expected. Now, admittedly, these numbers will, will probably require tweaking. But in all cases, the time periods include setup and takedown days. My suggested reg, my suggested regulations do not require any temporary outdoor entertainment events to be located at thirty-nine Military Highway. Its application and approval process would be a little more challenging than what would be required for a by-right use permit. However, once the special permit is granted, its holder will be entitled to conduct any of the permits listed temporary outdoor entertainment events subject to the regulations and the conditions of the special exception permit in perpetuity without a renewal requirement. The suggested regulations do, however, include a requirement to provide advance notice to the Fire Department, Department of Health, and the Land Use Department of the pending temporary outdoor entertainment event. Each of these departments has their own regulations and enforcement authority, which will be adequate to assure public health and safety. My proposed regulations require a special exception permit for very small, small, medium, and for large temporary outdoor entertainment events. Each special exception permit will include a listing of all of the types of temporary outdoor entertainment events that are allowed under that permit. The proposed regulations also provide that minor changes are easy. For example, if someone holds a special, a sec, exception permit for a very small temporary outdoor entertainment event that allows, for example, an outdoor chess tournament, and he wants to add a small outdoor flower show, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be authorized to amend his special exception permit as a minor change, provided all of the requirements for very small temporary outdoor entertainment events are satisfied. Although the sugge- suggested alternative regulations may need some tweaking, they are fundamentally fair and are technically, in my opinion, correct. In my opinion, their adoption will better serve later and should be given serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treister. So the, the only comment that I do feel obligated to make is that in my looking, there are at least three parcels in the Gales Ferry Design District that meet this. And that doesn't include the ability to assemble multiple parcels to meet that requirement, and there are also parcels directly adjacent to this district that could be used for this use as well. So I, I do certainly disagree with the comments regarding spot zoning.
Yes, Mr., Mr., Mr. Chairman, I, I understand what you're saying, and I partially agree. And that's why, that's not, that's why I did not absolutely come out and say that it was definitely spot zoning. I'm just said that it needs to be examined. My, my concern is that when, when I look at the, the G I S drawings, that was the only parcel that seemed to be vacant enough to hold a large event. And there is nothing in the proposed regulations about combining parcels, combining lots into a larger parcel to satisfy the ten-acre requirement.
Sure, yeah, the disagreement that, that I would make again is I, I would think that the Riverside Mall parking lot would make an ideal location for a lot of types of events like these. So I, I think there are absolutely other parcels that this is well suited for. But I understand your comment, and it's something that we, that I did discuss with Attorney Landalina, so I, I do understand your comment.
However, the Riverside parcel is not ten acres.
I believe it's greater than ten acres.
You're talking about the parking lot. The parking lot is, I believe the parking lot is less than ten acres.
I'm talking about the entire parcel.
The entire parcel has buildings on it.
There's nothing in here that limits, there's nothing in the regulation that controls the amount of open space, un, unbuilt upon space that needs to be used for the calculation.
Right, and that, and that's why a special permit should be required, so that that can be independently determined. Thank, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
Yes, I do. I have a comment. Good evening, Commissioner Woody and the commission, the commission members. I'm gonna, my name is Rosemary Garca, and I live at ten Pleasantview in Ledger. I like what Mr. Treister has written. I think he has done a great job with his analysis, and I have to say he's spot on. My one question to the commission is, why should the zone change just apply to thirty-nine Military Highway and not the rest of the town?
So it doesn't apply just to thirty-nine Military Highway. It applies to all parcels that meet this in the Gales Ferry Design District. And the reason that applies in the Gales Ferry Design District is the Gales Ferry Design District is a commercial district. So it is intended for commercial uses, as opposed to much of the rest of the town, which is zone residential. I think that you could make an argument for applying this in other commercial districts in town. But for this case, we selected the Gales Ferry Design District, which is the commercial district in town that is surrounding the highest throughput road in town.
Okay, another question for you. Ledger Town Fair used to be in the center of Ledger. Is that a commercial district?
That is, so that is in the Ledger Center Design District, which is a commercial district.
Okay. And there's no other commercial districts around. I still think that spot zoning is, like Mr. Treister said, illegal. It should be for the whole town of Ledger.
So that, I, I will agree that spot zoning is inappropriate. Spot zoning does not mean that any regulation that doesn't apply to the whole town, right? We're applying a regulation to a district, which is a collection of properties, and this applies to a specific district. And so I categorically deny that this is an example of spot zoning. Spot zoning does not mean simply that a, a regulation doesn't apply to the whole town.
Okay, and then with the spot zoning, is the spot zoning being done just so the fair has a place to go? Because they could have gone elsewhere.
They could have, and I think that one of the problems with the previous location that they talked about was it was unclear how we would resolve the zoning issues at that location. Moving to a commercial district makes this much easier.
Well, if you're gonna spot zone there, you could have spot zoned where they were gonna go and have it commercial. Right?
Okay, do you have any other further comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate it. I understand your comments, and I, I appreciate them. Any other comments from the public?
Yes. Yes, Karen Parkinson here.
Please.
Yes, this is, good evening. This is Karen Parkinson. I live at fifty-five Rosehill Road in Ledger. I'm owner of Rosehill Farm. Just first, I want to say that I'm very much in favor of the Ledger Fair. My husband and I have lived in Ledger for forty years, and we ran the horse show at the Ledger Fair for twenty of those years. And my husband also served as president of the Ledger Fair. So nothing I'm commenting on is negative to the Ledger Fair. I'm speaking tonight in support of Mr. Treister's many letters to you regarding this proposed zoning change. His thoroughness and creation of four levers, four levels of outdoor entertainment should be used in solving this self-inflicted dilemma regarding the Ledger Fair. And yes, we all know this is about the Ledger Fair, and it is a cut and paste from Waterford's zoning regulations. Interesting that Waterford did not restrict their outdoor entertainment to a specific district. To be fair, and pardon the pun, this zoning should apply to all districts. Otherwise, it has the appearance of spot zoning that shows favoritism to a particular parcel or perhaps a particular owner. Secondly, I must ask each of you to ask the hard questions, seek the appropriate answers to this important proposed zoning change. Perhaps it needs to be tabled and redrafted. I am sure that there is a way to make this work for all concerned. Even Mr. Cherry last month stated that, quote, "I'm interested in putting in a set of regs for ledgered events wherever they want to be," unquote. One of my questions right now is, does the Ledger Fair have a commercial license? I am sure it's a five oh one C three. It is not a commercial organization. So why does it have to be in a commercial zone? It could, events could be anywhere in Ledger. There's no reason that you have to have a commercial zone for the Ledger Fair, that I know of. Other fairs throughout the, the state are not in commercial zones. And this is an outdoor event you're considering, not the fair. You're zoning this for an outdoor event, not for the fair. Most outdoor events are not commercial.
Thank you. And yes, this regulation is modeled after the Groton, New London and Waterford regulations of similar form. Any other comments from the public?
Ignored.
Ignoring my, my question about a commercial.
I'm sorry, I took your comment on board. So most of the uses associated with, with this fit in a commercial zone where you're expecting lots of parking, where you're expecting lots of traffic, and all those things that fit well into a commercial zone as opposed to a residential zone. Any other comments from the public?
If I may.
Please.
Sure. My name's Rachel. I live at sixteen ninety-five Center Groton Road in Ledger. I appreciate the things that Eric Treister has brought, and just wanted to add some information as a chief lighting technician in years past about lighting. There are other attributes to light to consider. There's, of course, intensity, there's direction and quality. And these things are measurable from a design standpoint. So just to throw it out there, that you can measure where light will land from fixtures and how far it will go. Yeah, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, for some of our applications, we do request photometric plans in order to show that type of thing. So, yeah, no, it's a good comment. I appreciate it. Other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, this is Sarah Blunderman. I'm chair of the Ledger Fair Board. I live at five Sable Drive in Ledger. I'd like to thank the Garcos, and I'm sorry, Karen, I missed your last name. It's Rosehill Farm, I know, but I want to thank you for your comments in support of the fair. We are committed to finding a home inside Ledger that is a good fit, and we appreciate the support in terms of comments here at the meeting and in terms of the overall commission's willingness to work with us to find an appropriate location. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
One thing I forgot to mention. The Garcos purchased the property that the fair had formerly been pursuing, and they have been very kind and generous in working with the fair to give us an extension of time to move our materials off that property. So thank you to the Garcos for that as well.
Great, glad to hear it. Other comments from the public? Hearing none. Comments or questions from the commission before we make any move on closing or continuing the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, may I comment quickly? There was just one thing that I noted throughout this discussion. There are two references to the town in the regula, in the regulation, and based on the administrative approval, they should be changed to the Z E O. And that would be in Section B three and Section B seven.
Okay, thank you. Other comments for, from commissioners? Essentially, you know, we have a, a decision to make here whether we want to close the public hearing and proceed with the regulation amendment as we have it, or whether we want to continue this to make further modifications to the amendment as we've got it. Mr. Cherry, I see your hand up.
Good evening, Mike Cherry. Couple of things. I provided a copy of the lease between the Town of Ledger and the Ledger Board of Education and the Ledger Fair from twenty eighteen. I emailed it to Chairman Woody, the Town Planner, and to our administrative assistant. It's probably worth making part of the record to show what rules were in place to run the fair in Ledger Center. And you'll note, there aren't a lot that the fair worked without a lot of detail, without having a lot of written rules on how to go do it, but just worthy of making that an exhibit for people to peruse. I agree with Chairman Woody. I mean, my first cut at the regulation as written was, why are we living it to Gales Ferry? And then I, I, Gales Ferry Design District. And then I looked at the rest of the town, much as Mr. Treister did. Mr. Treister included all the residential areas with the exception of the multifamily Design District and other areas, and I'm not too sure that would be appropriate. And to make it appropriate would require a large number of restrictive rules in the zoning regs to be enforced to make it work. I also marked up the regulations. That'll be part of deliberation, not part of discussion. But I, I did look to see if we could expand this to other areas, and at this time, I don't think we can. I don't think we're in that position. And the rest would be for discussion during deliberation.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, you, you should address the subject of, of how long the notice was, was posted at the clerk's office. It was only posted for nine days, not ten days.
My understanding from the Town Planner was that it was posted for ten days.
It was posted on March first.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Yes, this is Katie. I think, I'm not sure if I want to mention this now or later, but I figured now's better. Maybe because this is on the table, you know, as a, you know, whether or not it should be by right or special permit, maybe an option to allow it in other districts as a special permit would provide a window for appropriate properties to make use of this.
I mean, it, it's worth noting that, that nothing about this regulation precludes later amendment to include in other districts with additional restrictions or without additional restrictions. Right? What this does is it permits it in a district. So that's accurate. Hearing no other comments from commissioners, I will close the public hearing at eight oh eight P M for application P Z twenty-one dash oh two R A zoning regulation text amendment. That, we will move on to the discussion and decision. Give me, I'm clicking around a little bit here. With that, I, I will entertain a motion. I can do it. I'll make a motion that we approve application number P Z twenty-one dash oh two R A zoning regulation text amendment. Advocate Ledger Planning and Zoning Commission for Proposed Regulation Amendments Regarding Temporary Forms of Outdoor Entertainment, revise Section three dot five uses by district and add new Section eight dot twenty-seven supplemental regulations temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. I'll add no conditions for now, though I think that we will probably add those through our deliberation, if I can have a second.
Mike Cherry, I'll second that.
Okay, second from Mr. Cherry. With that, I'll open this up to discussion among the, the commission. So, you know, I think things to discuss. We do have a couple of recommendations from the Town Attorney that we should consider. And I also think that we should make the decision or have a conversation about whether this is the appropriate regulation to move forward with. Just because we take this up doesn't mean that we have to vote for it. And so I do encourage discussion about whether or not this is the right approach for this regulation. With that, I'll open it up. Thoughts from commissioners?
If I could start, Mike Cherry?
Sure.
I also looked at special permit or by right. And, and I stayed with by right. And, and the question that that brought up was, should there be, you know, if it comes in by right with a site plan for this event, should there be some underlying previous approval of a overarching site plan for the property? My thoughts are similar to what we did in Gales Ferry and Landing. We approved a site plan for the building. And as different uses come in, they're reviewed to make sure they meet the use table for that area. So I wasn't too sure on that and I didn't really reach a conclusion. But I did, I did eliminate the residential zones. And, and a lot of it comes down to, how do you buffer and park in a residential zone? When somebody says residential zone, I live in Birdland. So I looked at Birdland and said, okay, if I had a large enough lot, or could I do something like that? Maybe Nathan Lester House Field, something like that. Would that be appropriate as a large enough area? The property off of Gallup Hill that we looked at before, we had a lot of difficulty with that due to density of residences, the roads in the areas, the infrastructure and access that would be required. So it looked very difficult from my perspective to go with a residential area. So I stayed with Gales Ferry Design District. I, I believe some specific things need to be fixed. I think under time period, we need to decide whether we mean a calendar year or a 12-month period. And that's a simple change. It's just which do we prefer? I think under, under noise, where we're talking hours of operation, I agree with the Town Attorney, we ought to specify hours of operation. That'd be one thing Monday through Thursday, maybe another Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And that also ought to cover noise. I don't think you can, I don't think, without a noise in town, the way to control noise is to control hours of operation. The other thing that I thought was important is under Section 8 where we're talking buffering. What do we mean by buffering? Do we mean stand, standoff? Do we mean setback? Or do we mean some physical means of buffering? That's Gary. Gary, you're, you're not muted and you're making some noise. I read through Mr. Treister's submittals, all of them. I appreciate his efforts. With reference to spot zoning, anytime you're making an amendment to the zoning regulations to add a use that doesn't exist anywhere in town, you're adding a use that doesn't exist anywhere else in town. That doesn't make a change to regulations, spot zoning. As long as it applies to the whole district, which is what 82 of Connecticut general statute says, you can have different rules in different districts, but the same rules within the district, it's not spot zoning. You can crowbar it to call it spot zoning, but it's not. You know, special permits, special permits, if somebody submits for a special exception, a special permit, and everything they have in their special permit meets the regulations, the commission is very restricted on what they can add and call it public safety to deny the permit, to say it didn't meet the regs. Once again, administrative review requires approval. If an application meets the regs, it's required to be approved. I don't care if it's by right or, or special exception. If it meets the special exception requirements, it still requires administrative review and approval. I'm strongly in favor of staying with one chunk, not trying to eat the whole elephant in one fell swoop. And I think this is a good start. I agree with Chairman Woody that if there's an interest in pursuing temporary outdoor events elsewhere, that can be either another section that may end up being special exceptions depending upon what part of town they're in. But that should be a subject of a future endeavor if there is an interest in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, part of my feeling on this was to avoid letting the perfect get in the way of, of good and what's needed. I think it's also worth noting, you know, that the ad hoc commission is currently running, which is likely going to result in regulations that would allow events on residential zones. And so I think that that regulation is coming as well. And what I think we should be careful about doing is not making, making sure that anything that we do here wouldn't conflict with what may come of that. Other comments from commissioners?
Just a thought. Are there any parcels in the Legerd Center Design District that would be 10 acres inappropriate first for events like this?
So in, in the Legerd Center District, there are a couple of zones that I think could be applicable for this. I will say that our Town Attorney advised us that we could not change the zones that this is permitted in without a new public hearing. So that's not a change that we can make to this application. We would need to do that as a separate application. I think there, there are, I believe, two or three parcels in Legerd Center Design District that would meet the size restriction.
I could see owners of those lots potentially being interested in expanding this, you know, or having, having a good case that we should be, you know, considering that we're saying that they're appropriate for commercial zones.
I, I'd encourage an application for someone who, from someone who wants to do something like this for that zone.
Yeah.
Mr. Cherry?
There's a large parcel behind Town Hall and behind Holdrages. I believe that's in the Transition District, not in the Design District as such. Most of the property in the Design District is in and around the school and out to Iron Street. That, from Fairway Drive to Iron Street to Colonel Legerd Highway for a long time, has been looked at as a commercial center. And to chart, to carve out a 10 acre piece and not develop it as commercial retail would probably not be in accordance with the Plan of Conservation and Development and the long-term comprehensive plan for the Town of Legerd, just my opinion. But the parcel that's behind Town Hall, at one point it was looked at as an app, looking for an amphitheater. I think Mr. Dave Holdridge had that vision for a long time. But I think that's in the Transition District, not the Design District. So that was one of the reasons I backed away. It takes a lot of study to figure out where do we want to put it? What visions are we changing? Comprehensive plan and Plan of Conservation and Development? And is that really what we want to do without updating those documents? Thanks.
Other comments from commissioners?
Tom Boudreau.
Please.
I'm in favor of going ahead with this. We can amend it, we can fix it, but this is a start. And I think we should be headed that way so that we can accommodate these things. And we're talking about agricultural things in the town and showing off our great agricultural background. Well, I think we need to go ahead with something like this to further bolster that attitude. Thank you.
Next, Tom.
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Marty Wood. I'm, thank you. I'm in favor of the fair. The fair has been part of my family, our family's lives since 1971. But I think there's some new information that's been shared. Mr. Cherry has mentioned sharing, that he shared some information. And, and I, I would like for us as a commission to consider tabling this until a month and give us a chance, give me a chance at least to look at some further documentation that was submitted tonight. And although I read Mr. Treister's, all of, all of his reports, I, there is some information that I feel I need to research on this. Thank you.
So, Mr. Wood, so what is the, what, what information are you looking for to, to understand?
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure it's relevant, otherwise my cherry wouldn't have submitted some information to, to you, the Chair and to the Vice Chair. But there, there are two other commissioners on the, on, on that, that said on this commission that, that haven't seen that yet. And so if it was, it seems to me like if it was important enough to be shared, it either should be put up so that at least I can see it, that Deb can put it up to see what was in there that warrants distribution of that. From what I understand, it was, it, the stated purpose was, was to show how little rules it takes to regulate the fair. I guess I would like to see that, although I'm not from Missouri.
Deb, do you have that submission?
I don't recall it.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment? This is Liz Burdick, the Town Planner. We received that after close of business hours today. I certainly could send it to Deb. She could, she could, you know, open it up, but it's, it's, there's two documents attached in email form only. So that's why it's not up there tonight. Nobody's seen it yet.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Cherry?
Right. And may I say that I'm not saying anything other than I, I think if it was important enough for Mike who has, is very competent and very thorough, if he feels that his information that, that is shareable, I would like to see what that is before I vote in the affirmative on this.
That's fair. So here's what I'll do. So without opposition from the commission, I will go ahead and reopen the public hearing for PZ 21-02 RA. And we will continue that until our next meeting. We'll make sure that is attached. That resolves as well any concerns anyone has about noticing. And so any complaints from commissioners on moving forward that way?
I, I don't have a complaint, but a document submitted during the public hearing meets the middle requirement. So it's not that it's late. It's just dope, I agree with Marty, nobody's seen it, but the people I sent it to, and they probably haven't checked their email. I know Liz did because she answered. I know the chairman didn't because we were keeping him busy. And the same with Deb, I'm sure she hasn't seen it, but I don't have any objection to that.
Any other commissioners have objections? Okay, hearing none then. I'll reopen the public hearing for application PZ 1, PZ 21-02 RA zoning regulation and text amendments. Let me get a calendar here. Is the commission opposed to holding a special meeting solely for this application on March, Thursday, March 25th?
I, that's interesting because I was going to recommend that, so.
I'm available.
Where's for me?
All right. So then we will continue this public hearing until March 25th, 2021. At, and I'm actually going to change our time slightly to 7:30 PM. There is a conflict with the Agricultural Ad Hoc Committee. So if I can push this public hearing back to 7:30, that will help that. Okay, with that, because we continue the public hearing for application PZ 21, there is no discussion or discussion, discussion or decision. So we will table that item.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Boudreau?
I'd just like to comment, the alleged fair opened in 1948 as Legerd Grange Fair and there were no rules. So things progressed to where they are.
Yeah, fair enough. So with that new business, we do have several new applications. So I will receive application PZ 21-03 subdivision, that's proposed three lot subdivision, excuse me, at 48 Town Farm Road. I will table that till our April meeting on April 8th, 21st, when the applicant will be making a presentation. Next, next new item is application and number PZ 21-04, which is a proposed three lot subdivision at 34 Village Drive. The applicant is Anthony Silvestri for a two lot re-subdivision to create three lots. We need a public hearing for this application. So we will set that public hearing for April 8th, 2021. Next on our agenda, we have several 824 reviews. So the first item is a 824 review for 1025 Colonel Legerd Highway, Legerd, Connecticut. This is a request from Mr. Major for, this is a request from the town for a favorable 824 review for a proposed five-year lease of town-owned property for farming. And so this is a, there has been a lease in place between Mr. Major and the town for this property for several years. Really, the, the primary change here is this is a change to a five-year lease, whereas before, I believe this was an annual lease, so I think we had to, we renewed it every single year. And so this is now moving to a five-year lease, essentially to support an application that Mr. Major is making to be able to get some subsidy of what he's doing there. There's been, this has been a lease that's been in place for quite a while. I'm not aware of any problems we've ever had with Mr. Major's use of this property for farming. So I'm not aware of any problems or concerns that would preclude our forwarding a favorable report. But any comments or questions from the commission on this? Burdick, any further, sorry, Mr. Cherry?
So we're, we're being asked to provide a favorable review for five for five-year lease, but that doesn't bind the town council or the mayor to actually executing a five-year lease.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman Liz Burdick. Yeah, the only change is, so the lease that has been in place for some time just automatically renewed every year unless there was, unless there was a change to it. Now there's a change to it for the five-year lease due to the possibility of some, some, some funding opportunities. Additionally, he is going to add about 5.30 acres of land on the other side of Joe Clark Brook. On the, the news, if I, I attached a copy of the finance board minutes to the application because it's pretty detailed, but what is, what they are doing there is he's going to continue to lease the front portion of the lot, the 18.7 acres that he has been farming for this, for the longest time. And then what he's going to do is he's going to get permits from wetlands to cross the brook. And then he's going to prepare the land on the other side. The other, excuse me, 5.3 acres. At that point, rent will be collected. There will be no money exchanged for the rear portion of the land until such time as that is done. So that's really the only change is the addition of extra acreage and the term of the lease.
Thank you. I, I didn't realize the, the additional, the five acres was new to the lease. I thought that had been included in the previous lease. Thanks for the clarification. Mr. Wood, I think I saw your hand going up.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So Liz, thanks for addressing a question that I, that I had. So is it my understanding that the, that there is no financial benefit to the town for this five acres that's there until some work is done to cross the brook and then there will be a financial benefit to the town?
Correct. The, 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 I, I don't know all of the details, but once the permits are in place to cross the brook to prepare the land for farming, the town will then start collecting rent for the additional 5.3 acres. So we're not losing any money. We're, we're, we're keeping the same funds that are coming in, but it gives the town an opportunity to make some additional funds once the land is made suitable for farming.
Thank you.
Is that good? Commissioner Wood?
Thank you for, thanks for the follow-up. I guess I don't, I, I guess I'm not sure why we would give people access to property and not get some financial benefit from it. And so I, I know it's a, a year-to-year lease. It's automatically renewable. So is this, are, are there any other cases where individuals have leased acreage from the town for no financial benefit?
But he, he doesn't get any use of the land right when he's not paying rent. So essentially the rent on the five acres is not going to be due until he actually has access to the land to farm it. It's unleaved now, and so the town makes no money off of it. And so what this does is this provides him a lease, essentially the confidence that he can access the land, do whatever needs to be done in order to actually make it farmable. And once he does that, he does no rent until he does that. And then he will be paying rent as soon as it's usable.
Thanks for that clarification. That, that, that actually answers the questions that I've had. So for the year-to-year over the past X amount of years, the land has been leased to Mr. Major, but there's been, Mr. Major has not included that in any of these farming endeavors. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the five, the 5.3 acres is additional. The town will still be collecting the same amount of rental money until that land is made usable for farming, and then they will be collecting more.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, I will call a vote on, did we ever make a motion on this? I don't recall making a motion. Deb, did we make a motion in a second on this?
No, I don't think so. No.
I can't believe nobody called me out. So I'll make a motion that we send a favorable 824 review for the town council for a five-year lease of about 24 acres of town-owned property located at 1025 Colonel Ledyard Highway to Walter Major for farming in accordance with the final lease approved by town council. Do you have a second?
Mike Cherry, I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Cherry. We already discussed this previously, so last chance for any discussion on this item. Hearing none, I will call the vote on a motion for a favorable 824 report. Ms. Gannonlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next up is another 824 referral. This referral is for renovations of the Morgan Barn located on the town green at 728 Colonel Ledyard Highway for the food pantry. So this is a, a, an older building on the town green that they have previously examined for this use, and they, they've looked at a number of alternatives for this. But the final decision has been to move forward with the Morgan Barn. And essentially, this is going to include modifying the Morgan Barn to install a waterless incinerator toilet, a water bottle sink for hand washing, mini-split HVAC, as well as lighting and flooring, and possibly a dumbwaiter to move food between the floors. So I'll have my act together and make the motion first. I make a motion to forward a favorable report in accordance with CGS Section 824 to the town council for substantial improvement to the Morgan Barn or other municipally-owned property or public building for interior renovations located on the town green at 728 Colonel Ledyard Highway for the Ledyard Food Pantry. Thank you, Mr. Boudreaux. So yeah, so this is, we, the town has been hunting for a new location for the food pantry for quite some time and has explored a number of different locations. The most recent attempt before this was considering going into the former Ledyard Center School. And so they, the town has decided instead to try to move in the direction of using the Morgan Barn. You know, I, I actually support this. I think if we're going to be spending money, we might as well spend it on a town asset. The Morgan Barn, fixing up the Morgan Barn can be of use of other events that are held at the town green. This has got good truck access, big parking lot out back. So it's easy for people to get to. And so I think this might actually be a really good location for the food pantry. Ms. Burdick, anything that I'm missing from this?
No, Mr. Chairman, you, you've covered it all. I just think it'll also be a nice addition. As you know, we obtained $128,000 worth of funding to do some some, some, you know, work to the town green, and I think this will go along nicely with it.
Yeah, I wish we had the money to put the septic into the Morgan Barn from that, from that grant, but we did not, so.
We did not, but we could certainly write another one next year.
Yeah. Discussion from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for clarification. So you, you had mentioned, or it was mentioned that the town is exploring where to put the, the food center. And it was my understanding, I believe from reading in the newspaper, that the town had decided to rent two spaces. And, and so it, has that moved forward? And I know it was a month-to-month basis, and it's around $1,300, I, I think, for those two spaces. Is that? What is the status of that?
And so that is not going forward. I, I don't know the details. I know there were issues with getting an agreed-upon lease. And so one of the reasons why they went back to exploring using the Morgan Barn was an inability to get an agreed-upon lease for those locations at the former Ledyard School.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call the vote on a motion to send a favorable 824 review for improvements to the Morgan Barn. Ms. Gannonlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you all. Next up is the approval of minutes from our February 11th meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of the minutes from February 11th, Mike Cherry?
I second that by Wood.
Thank you. Any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Yes, I, I would like to make an addition to the minutes. Under the roll call and appointments of alternates, I'd like to add in there our town council liaison name, Kevin Dombrosky. And, and then we can mark on there whether he's present or absent, as we do with all the other commissioners. And if you go to the town website, he's listed as a member of this commission. So I think it's only appropriate that we take attendance and show that.
Okay. Let's just make sure that we mark his title, not as a member, but as the council liaison.
Okay.
Any other changes or additions? Hearing none, I'll call a roll on the motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Gannonlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Correspondence, the only note I have is there will be a public hearing on Monday, March 15th for a set of bills that are going through the House and Senate on various housing issues. So this includes proposed changes to the zoning act itself, an act explicitly around ADUs and a, another act regarding training of planning and zoning commissioners. So several of these bills have been in and out of the house several times in various forms, but there's certainly been a fair amount of noise about these bills this year. And so even if people aren't able to attend the public hearing, I recommend you go look up those bills and take a look at them. If people aren't on the Partnership for Strong Communities web service list, I highly recommend that you do that. They do, they do a really good job of reporting any bills that are going through the House or Senate that are related to housing and zoning. Pretty good, pretty good feedback on what's going on from them. So I encourage you all to pay attention to that. Under reports, town planner, Ms. Burdick?
Yes. So I don't have too much new to report. We've been busy, as you see by the agenda. The Loatzip Grant, we are getting ready to submit our application to DOT and to through the COG. They're doing survey work right now. We hope to have that submitted on or before March 31st. So we're crossing our fingers. That all seems to be going well. The plan now is to move the path to the north side. We originally had it on the south side, but it is now proposed on the north side for safety measures, you know, crossing Gallup Hill Road down by the school. It may be a 40 mile an hour zone, but, or 25, but I don't see many people that actually drive there, and the sightline's difficult. So we wanted to be able to have kids crossing from the high school, be able to do it on Gallup Hill Road, and then get onto the multipurpose path right onto Colonel Ledyard Highway. So that is the latest proposal. Our consultants gave us two proposals and gave us a pros and cons list for both, and the Public Works Director agreed that the north side would be a better fit after all. So we're still going to be completely connected. We're still going to connect sidewalks down to the best way. But there won't be a crosswalk right there on Center Grotton Road and Colonel Ledyard Highway. So that's, that's a safer option. So we're working hard on that. And once we get the proposal together, hopefully by next meeting, I can include it as an attachment to my report, and you can see where we are. So that'll be our first submit to DOT. They'll take a look at it. They'll, you know, redline it and send it back to us and tell us what we need to have fixed. And then we submit them a final report. There may be, you know, we may have underestimated it. There are excess funds for communities that, you know, the costs are coming in higher, so we should be fine there. The steep grant documents are completed and will be sent to DECD tomorrow for signature, and then we can get started on that project. And now that the Morgan Barn is up and running, we can kind of work on all of that together. We have not received our official award letter from DOH yet for our King's Corner rehabilitation project, but I, I hope since they just announced the latest round of funding for DOH for CDBG that we get our letter before, you know, we have to apply for the next round. My hope was that this time around, we could put in an application form for housing rehabilitation. Last year, the DOH only granted one housing rehabilitation application. All others were senior housing and housing real, multifamily housing, public housing rehabilitation. So if we, I have a waiting list now on my housing rehab of 18 people, and we have a pre-application form that we can post in the, the Ledger Events Magazine. And if we can get enough people that are interested in obtaining that funding, we should be able to put an application together for DOH for this year's round of funding. So we're still waiting on the official letter from DOH for last year's round that we received and hope to put in another application and hope to obtain funding for that. The last application was about $400,000 that the town received in 2014 for housing rehab. And since we've been using the Events Magazine to advertise the funds, our funds are, are just dwindling down to nothing. We got a really good response from the ad that I put in there, and I have about 25 people on the list, of which 18 are on the waitlist. So hopefully we should be able to get some funding for local housing rehab. So that's where we are with all of our grants.
Just a follow-up, if I can, on, on the Lotzip proposal. So going to the, the north side, I, I hope there is still included a crosswalk to Blonders?
Yes.
Okay. That was, that was my, my main concern is that we still maintain that connection. Because I think once we get to the center of town, the, almost the best route there, as long as we're connecting up to the, essentially the rear entrance to the town green, then you have good connection to everything along the, the main strip there.
Yeah, so even when we were going to have it on the south side, we initially had the path running all the way down to Center Grotton Road, and then we were going to cross there over to the best way and come up. But then when we really looked at some of the safety aspects of that design, we decided that we were going to cut the multipurpose path off. we decided that we were going to cut the multipurpose path off anyway at the road. I can't recall the name right now because it's late at night, the road that leads up to the Bill Library. We were going to have it.
Ray Holdridge Circle.
Yes, Ray Holdridge Circle. We were gonna, we were gonna cut the path off at that point anyway and, and provide a crosswalk at Ray, Ray Holdridge Circle. So this way, it'll already be on the north side, and will connect basically to everything, and we absolutely have not eliminated the crosswalk to Blonders Park.
Great.
One last thing, and I'm, I'm going to make it quick. So I, I asked Deb to include some links for all of you to peruse over the next month. There are bills, as many of you, many of you may know, right now for the legalization of recreational marijuana. And I am starting to get phone calls from perhaps future interested parties about how our zoning regulates the sale of, of recreational marijuana, and I wanted you to all read through that and sort of, you know, have a general discussion on the feelings of the commissioners on how it is allowed.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, we, we've talked about this briefly, you know, in the past. And to me, it's a retail operation, and I'm not sure what zoning has to say about it, much beyond that. But, you know, I, I think the commission's talked about it a couple of times. I, I may, I, I don't think I'm out on a limb there.
Well, I think it's very similar to alcohol. You know, the original discussions when we redid the regs, the only marijuana authorized was medicinal. And we said we should follow the same rules we would for pharmacy, which was it's a retail operation. So I don't know, it's, it's the sense of the community. If the community thinks we need zoning regs, it's not zoning that's going to control it, much as we don't control the number of liquor stores in town.
Yeah.
Right. But I just wanted all of you to take a look at it, and, and there's a govern, there's a bill that the governor has put together, or there's, and a summary, and then, then there is another bill that was raised by someone by the name of Robin Porter that this attorney that I spoke with thought had a better chance of getting through than the governor's bill. But anyway, I just thought it would be interesting evening reading for all of you. And, you know, if, if you have any comments, please feel free to email me or call me or comment.
Great, thanks. Yeah, the, the governor's bill is a little hard to get through. It is lengthy. But yeah, it, it covers a lot of ground. You know, it is not merely about, you know, sale of marijuana. It covers, it covers a lot of grounds. There's lots of stuff in there. Thanks for that. Kyle, I have a ZEO report. Any questions for Liz from the commission before we get there? Mr. Chair?
Just one, and it's back on a lots of grant. Are, are we good with road right away, all the way from Gallup Hill to the center of town?
We're going to find out in the next week or so, because they're complete, yeah, they're, we thought they were done with the survey work, but then we saw them back out there yesterday. We think we're going to be okay, Mr. Chair.
And cuts and fills are about, I guess cuts and fills are a little easier because from Blondor to Gallup on the south side was pretty severe.
Well, we had some tricky spots in both sides, so I think it'll be an interesting design, let's put it that way, right, right when you leave the high school and you, you cross over from the high school on Gallup Hill Road over to Colonel Ledyard Highway. There's some interesting topography there, but I can tell you that when Steve Maslin went out on sidewalk, he actually spoke with one of the property owners that, you know, we thought we may have an issue with, and the property owner was thrilled and said he's been waiting for a sidewalk for years. And he said that people walk past his house all the time on the other side of the guardrail, so he, he was really in favor. So the one, one or two residents that they were able to actually speak with were, were really positive about the path, so that was a great thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Felice, you have a ZEO report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So frankly, we're getting busy. The weather's breaking. Everyone's starting their projects. I think we got about five pool permits this week. A lot of new houses still going up. I approved a couple recently. I probably have three more on my desk that came in this week. I didn't even get a chance to look at those yet. Several of those are down on the Flatbrook subdivision down in Gills Ferry. That's wrapping up pretty quickly. I believe there's only two lots left that don't have foundations yet. So I anticipate that to be finished up this year, pretty much. And a lot of my efforts this month were in the office, just dealing with the public, so I did not have a whole lot of time with enforcement. Thirty-nine Berry Drive, there was a garage being constructed, not in accordance with the permit exactly, so I sent them a NOV at the end of February. The building department also sent a letter. We have not heard a response from them. So we're going to keep an eye on that. The Computech Auto Repair on the corner of twelve and Long Cove. The owner reached out to me. They're having some concerns with getting cars off quickly with DMV with paperwork. I drove by the other day. They did get some of them out of there, but there's still a lot there, so I need to touch base with him again regarding that. And received a new complaint in Meeting House Lane. There was, there was a camper and a construction trailer dumped at it, basically a vacant property, partially in the town right of way. I went out there again today. It's just a construction trailer now. However, it looks like someone's residing out there. There's actually some chickens and roosters there. No one was present at the time. So that is going to be my priority early next week to try to get that tied up. But aside from that, any questions?
Questions from commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, Kyle. Any other reports? I, I added this to our agenda last month because I, I kept missing things. So made a permanent space on the agenda for reports from, you know, regional POCD or, you know, we have members from both WPCA and Conservation Commission. And so if there's things going on with those committees that they want to share, I figured it was worth putting a spot on the agenda for people to be able to voice those comments and with me, prevent me from glossing over it. So anything? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you all. With that, at eight fifty-eight PM, we will adjourn and we'll get the meeting set up for the fourth Thursday in March at seven thirty. We'll get that meeting set up and get that information sent out to everybody.
Hey, now that we're adjourned, that bill, the rewrite eight-two, the zoning and